Economic development. The third item is, council and staff, I think we need to do a better job as we talk about removing items from the dinner today. I think it caught a little bit some of us off guard that we got an email very late in the evening, and we need to work on our procedure because I know staff was working very hard this weekend on that item, and if we decide that we need to pull it, I think we need to work on the process, maybe do it on a Friday, so staff will not have to waste time working through that. So, I don't know, we need to refer that to a committee, but we need to do a better job of pulling items, so it would be fair to our citizens as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Phipps?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just want to, as we enter the second week of our motorsports and NASCAR Speed Week coming up on a Friday, and also some good races come up this weekend, I mean, the Bank of America Coca-Cola 600 coming up, I would just encourage everybody to get your NASCAR gear out and walk Speed Week this week, and let's cheer for the motorsports industry in the Charlotte region.
All right. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. It was a long and interesting weekend, to say the least, and I just want to officially go on record supporting the chamber in criticizing the HRC for the language they use towards them to imply that they're bigots when they're, in their minds, working for a way to extend LGBT rights throughout our community. And it's easy for Chad Griffin to come down here and wag his finger, he lives in, I think, Washington DC, he doesn't have to live through the consequences of our inaction. As such, I would like to put forth a motion to request an agenda item for May 25th meeting. I'd like to ask my colleagues to support drafting a resolution that affirms our values, that our city opposes discrimination, and an ordinance that will clean up our code book, taking items that have been invalidated by the North Carolina General Assembly off the books.
Second?
Okay, discussion of the motion, it's kind of an odd timing to do this, but to put something on, that's right, on the May 25th agenda, which is a budget straw vote agenda, to, okay, Councilor Mayfield.
I don't really see a need for us to have yet another discussion. It's kind of interesting, one, that we're letting an individual at the chamber lead the discussions that we're having, also, when, if, until Raleigh General Assembly representatives actually send a request in writing to the Charlotte City Council, either with a statement, a comment, as well as stating, okay, if you address this any further than we've already had, this is what we're going to do, I'm not understanding why we keep trying to middle around to come up with something. The moment our General Assembly passed this legislation, our ordinance was null and void. It was rescinded. There is nothing else for us to do on the Charlotte City Council. This whole conversation lands in the lap of the General Assembly. Now, I will agree that I am not happy with outside groups. At this point, this whole conversation has become very politicized. This is a fundraising effort for Democrats, for Republicans, for the Human Rights Campaign, for Equality in North Carolina, for me, and for a number of my colleagues, we are talking about people's lives here. We are talking about their everyday life and their quality of life. This is not, should not be used as a political ploy to raise money, but I feel like if Charlotte City Council tries to play like we're going to come up with a resolution that has absolutely no meaning whatsoever, without the General Assembly putting something in writing to us, not having a conversation with one of my colleagues, or two of my colleagues, or three of my colleagues, to put it in writing, what exactly do you expect us to do? Because the moment you pass your legislation, which now has the United Nations looking at North Carolina, why? Because it was so sweeping across the state. We did not have any businesses threatening to boycott Charlotte, when Charlotte passed its fully non-discrimination ordinance that was fully inclusive. You did not hear any conversation regarding businesses, regarding concerts, anyone talking about boycotting, not showing up, I'm going to take my business elsewhere, until our General Assembly passes legislation. So now you think it should come back to Charlotte, when as a municipality, we don't have the authority to change what happens in Raleigh? I'm just not understanding the logic that's being used to say this now falls in Charlotte City Council's lap, because it doesn't, because we didn't have any business tell Charlotte, you know what, y'all passed this ordinance, so we're leaving. No. In fact, we had businesses lined up to come immediately after we passed our ordinance. It was not until weeks later that our General Assembly passed legislation that was sweeping that businesses said, you know what, that is not where we want to take our employees, because we care enough about our employees that we want them to be protected.
Councilmember Dreggs, and I'll get back to this.
Right, I think we need to recognize that there are a couple of levels in this conversation. The issue of LGBT has progressed to the national and the international stage, it's in the courts, but what we're left with in North Carolina is basically a standoff between city council and the General Assembly. Members of the General Assembly who recognize that they need to take some action, said to us, help us out here, get out of the way, and certainly my involvement in all of this had to do with just trying to participate in a solution in order to get the state out of where we were. My feeling is that advocacy groups have held us up as a human shield as they charged into the machine guns. This is a battlefield, and all the casualties are here in North Carolina, and I'm very anxious to take any path that leads us through that, and what we're running up against here is a history of a shoving match between city council and Raleigh, and I don't think we should let stubbornness and pride on that level obstruct an answer. I believe the question about rights protection, and certainly the bathrooms, has moved on to other places anyway, we should be really interested in finding any way that we can relieve the pain of North Carolina and Charlotte, and if it means that a few people have got to swallow their pride, then I think our responsibility to the city should make us willing to do that. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Councilor Smith?
Councilman Mayfield made several points. What I'd like to say is that prior to outside interest groups, there was not an outcry in the city of Charlotte to include the bathrooms. That was done by outside interest groups that have sway with our body. They came in and made that request. We had MetLife, we had PayPal, we had the NBA All-Star Game. We have a litany of corporate relocations that came to our community prior to us having an ordinance, and they made commitments to come to our community, invest millions of dollars prior to us having an ordinance. I cannot stand by and watch as we lose events and more to come, and not feel like I was not working towards some sort of solution, did it, for the people I represent. I was elected to represent the citizens of Charlotte. That's the person making $10 an hour down at the arena. That's the person that's got a job that's dependent in tourism. It's a lot of people, and I just can't stand by with inaction. So I put it forth. If you don't want to vote for it, that's fine, vote against it, everybody has a right to do that. We spent the better half of a month trying to figure out a way to do it, we appeared close, and now we're not. And I can no longer stand by and watch. So if you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. We don't need to relet it get everything, we probably know where council, each council member stands on this, I mean, I think it's been evident over our conversations over the past eight weeks. But February 21st, we had companies that were willing to come here, PayPal was willing to come here, MetLife had come here, we had people that had come. So I don't think to suddenly say that a handful of companies that have made characterizations that they will not come based on pressure they're receiving from outside interest groups, that we should not be part of a solution.
Councilor Mayfield?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So the one thing that I love about local politics is that we don't necessarily get into as much, well, really, we don't have the discourse that they have in Raleigh. So I don't think that every decision that we make is based on making the other party look bad, or with the purpose of hurting the other party. But I am going to acknowledge that both my colleague, Mr. Dreggs, as well as my closest buddy next to me, have valid points. I just want you to expand that thought, to recognize that a lot of those workers that you're talking about at the arena do identify as lesbian, gay, bi, or trans. So those are employees also that are not protected, that do deserve protection. It's for me, I don't have a particular bone in this fight, one way or another, outside of fact that discrimination is not okay, period. So yes, we had companies that were committed to come to Charlotte, because Charlotte is a great city to be in. We have amazing opportunities, and we also embrace the diversity of this city. But when you try to compare, and when my colleague, Mr. Dreggs, says that we need to take action, you're absolutely right, and the moment that Raleigh sends something in writing, stating exactly what it is they expect, opposed to a verbal conversation that all 11 of us have not been a part of, is the moment that I would seriously consider, what does that look like? Because just like we have members of the business community saying, Charlotte, no, it's all your fault, we have hundreds of business community leaders who have never gotten involved with politics, ever, that have sent letters to Raleigh stating HB2 is hurting our business. Why? Because we have reduced five pages of legislation to one point, and it is the most redundant, ridiculous point of where you use the bathroom. So since people like to have this conversation of, don't compare the civil rights movement to this conversation, let's recognize that the majority, a good number of the people sitting around this table, you had restrooms that were labeled, labeled, men, women, and then colored. So we weren't as African Americans, as African American female or male, we were not considered male or female. It did not matter whether we took a child into the bathroom with us or not, because in this great nation of ours, we were not even recognized as human beings, much less male or female. So if we're going to have a conversation about the impact of HB2, then why don't we start having a conversation about the fact that this legislation that our leaders passed, that our governor had 30 days to think on before he responded, included taking away municipality rights, included taking away the rights for any minority, whether that means you're a senior, whether that means you're African American, Asian, Latino, veteran, handicapped, if you're fired, you can no longer file a case on the state level. No, let's send it to federal, where, oh, crazy thought, shorter timeline, it's going to be much more expensive, and the burden falls on you. So let's talk about this four or five pages, and not get stuck on this page and a half, where if it was really about protecting all the women and children, why is there no language in there that actually talks about any protections? And if it was really about protecting our families, in the state of North Carolina, your minimum sentencing for assaulting or animal abuse is longer than that of abusing a woman or a child. So if we were ever talking about protecting women and children, and now we're talking about protecting the business community, the business community has made a decision. They said, we have these protections on our books for our employees. So we are not going to bring employees into a city, into a state, that is not going to protect our people. So don't give me this BS excuse and try to play the role of the victim all of a sudden, because, oh, the business community is saying, we need to make a choice, we need to do something. City of Charlotte, you did a very bad thing. Well, guess what? Raleigh General Assembly, grow up, do your job, fix the mess that you made, instead of looking to the city of Charlotte, who were expanding our ordinance to protect all people. If you want something done, either one of you, my colleagues, I would gladly consider it, if you get something in Raleigh stating what they plan to do, opposed to having private conversations with them about what they might do.
Councilor Austin?
Amen. What's too much to be said after all that? I will say, I do appreciate the members of the council that did go to Raleigh and tried to come up with a solution. Yes, we are hurting all over the state, and we're hurting here in Charlotte. However, I take issue with the fact of that Charlotte needs to wink, dip, burp, whatever we needed to do in order to move ahead. This is, this is an issue for our general legislators, who are there creating laws that have hurt. We created something that was inclusive, we created something that 200 other cities in this country have, we were trying to be progressive, we're a global city, we're trying to move forward, we're trying to move Charlotte, we're trying to move North Carolina forward. Any resolution that we would have to repeal something that we have done, I would not be in support of that at any point. If we're making a resolution that says we are going to repeal Hate Bill 2, that would be something I would support. But I would not support any sort of wink, nod, or any other thing that they're requesting us to do. I don't know why Charlotte has to do anything. Why does Charlotte have to do anything? We don't have a city ordinance anymore. That is my perspective on it. So you have a bill that's been created, do something about it, take care of it, and stop the pain around North Carolina. That's what needs to happen. Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Councilor Phipps?
Yeah, I appreciate the motion made by my colleague, Mr. Smith, I too, as well as all of the council are concerned with the impact that this dilemma is causing the city. But I do think that we, over the last couple of weeks or so, that we've looked at certain resolutions, and even the one that you purport to bring forth on Wednesday, we looked at it, and I guess we didn't have any traction around it. So I would be hesitant to go through that whole machinations again, with little effect that I would think that we have around the dais, little support, but while I can sympathize with where we are, it doesn't look like we just don't have the votes, to quote my friend that quoted me, we just don't have the votes at this time, so.
Councilor Dreggs?
I'll do you all the favor of not responding to all the points. I'm just telling you, as your intergovernmental relations chair, that we would have gotten closer to getting North Carolina out of this misery by working with the General Assembly than we are by taking the position we do. This is a Dillon's rule state, they have the authority, and sitting there and demanding that they come to heal and do things on our terms invites a lot of problems. And I've been warned by Representative Brawley, for example, who has taken some actions that benefited us, like deflecting the sales tax redistribution and passing the STI on transportation fund allocation, and he says that his ability to kind of protect Mecklenburg County in those areas is going to be impaired. And we need to be a little bit more realistic here. We can stand on sort of principles, and we can point and say, it's their fault, it's their fault, let them fix it, but the fact is, the whole state is suffering, and the word we got from some members in the General Assembly was that they were concerned, that they were looking for action they might take, and that it was being made more difficult because the historical tensions between Charlotte and Raleigh are getting in the way. And at some point, we take ourselves out of the way, and then they can answer to the other people who are leaning on them, in fact, the pressure on them to do so is going to be all the greater. But what we're doing now is we're causing positions to become more entrenched, speeches like that one are going to inflame people in Raleigh, and if you think you can win a shoving contest with those guys, I'm telling you, you're wrong. You're just not going to.
You do realize just that on television that they're threatening. Councilmember Isol.
Can I just speak to that point? I think all my colleagues know that I have, one, said that I stand firm against discrimination of any kind, and, two, that I really am trying to figure out how we can find a solution, because this is hurting so many people. But I think that, to me, the elephant in the room is there is no trust. I have gone, I've spoken, I haven't had one member of the General Assembly call me and say, let's talk, hey, you're new on council, let me introduce myself and talk to you about this. I've reached out to civic leaders in the community, nobody's willing, no one that stood up against the repeal of HB2 is willing to go on record, because they're so darn afraid of what Raleigh will do to them. So I think the fact is, we do have every reason to be afraid of the threats of Raleigh, and perhaps that's the problem, and so before we can get to a vote, which I would very much like to get to, I think we've got to figure out a way to build trust between ourselves and Raleigh, and from my limited time on council, with the airport, with the managed roads, with the business tax repeal, where we're now trying to plug a hole on our budget, I just, time and time again, I just don't see the evidence that is there that leads us to believe that our own delegates, I mean, this bill was sponsored by Dan Bishop, who is a Mecklenburg County delegate, I just don't see that they're there saying to us, hey, hey, folks, let's figure out a way to get along with the General Assembly. And, you know, I know, I've heard, as long as I've lived in Charlotte, that Charlotte is the bane of their existence, the great state of Mecklenburg, and as somebody who was just a citizen six months ago, and had worked very hard on public education, I feel like I'm always being shamed by what we're asking of our General Assembly, and there are times when I feel like calling up Nikki Haley and say, would you take the burden of Charlotte on yourself? I just, I'm really, I don't think we can get to a place of a vote until we figure out a way to establish trust and get the facts out on the table. You're asking us to repeal an ordinance, and we don't know what you're going to do in return. Nothing, we just don't know, and I just, I don't see how that's sound risk management on our part.
Councilor Smith?
The surest pathway to build trust is to offer a symbolic gesture of taking an ordinance that's not valid, it's already off the books. If we want to build trust, let's take an action, symbolic, show them that they've got a good faith partner in Charlotte, we're not giving anything up, the ordinance is not, is not valid. That's our.
So the symbolic would be what?
So they can see that they've got a partner in Charlotte to work with.
But they're going to do what?
Call the question. I mean, we're dug in, I get it, call the question.
Councilmember Austin, did you have?
My question simply is, okay, they want us to wink and do this action and repeal our ordinance. What will they do?
Yes.
To the camera. What will they do?
There are several things that they discussed with the bipartisan group that they're willing to put on the table, every one of which puts the LGBT community in a better place than they are today. Because right now, we've got HB2 in place, and we've got laws in which the LGBT community have no rights, and they are willing to push the ball forward, and I want to be part of the solution. I get constituents coming up to me every day of the week, begging for us to help find an answer, begging us to participate in a solution, not being part of the problem. Like it or not, we passed a dag gum ordinance that caused this mess. You can say that it was, you can say you don't think it should have caused this mess, but it did cause this mess. I got, we got an email the day my father was dying from the governor, saying, don't include the bathrooms. We let the HRC bully us into including the bathrooms, we ended up here. Can we not just offer a gesture on an ordinance that is not valid, and by doing so, we recognize we're going to move the ball forward for the LGBT community? Call the question. I mean, I know, it's like a broken drum, I know, we know where everybody is, I just couldn't stand by anymore.
I think what we have seen here this evening, for those who are still watching and listening, is the difficulty that our state is facing, that our city is facing, and that our future is facing, with the tough questions, so many issues wrapped into one, the relationship between Charlotte and Raleigh, the stand for equality, the question about how do you back away from non-discrimination without looking like your symbolism is actually supporting returning to a time when there were no protections? This is a problem with symbols. Symbols mean things to different people, and for a city to repeal something that has already been preempted is a symbolic statement that we think there was something wrong with the action in the first place, which those of us who voted for it do not believe. We have had a conversation, we've had numerous conversations with people in Raleigh, many of us were trying desperately to figure out a way forward. All of us are feeling the pain, and if anybody in Raleigh watches this, they need to know that as well, Charlotte absolutely feels the pain, whether you voted for this or not. And it is my sincere hope that our legislators, our delegation, our legislators will seriously think about what they can positively do to remove the cloud from our state. And I am, I am not going to vote unless I need to on this, but the procedure around this is also suspect, because if we do want to have this conversation, I'm not sure that we do, we should give notice, we should have things in writing ahead of time, I'm talking process, just like Mayor Pro Tem. We need to have things in writing, people need to see them in plenty of time, the public needs to see them and weigh in, and our delegation needs to see it and weigh in, and we need to do that in a more structured, orderly fashion if we're actually going to think about policy. This motion tonight does not allow for that to happen.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I think, Mayor, that it's really a difficult conversation to have right now. I think that Councilmember Smith is asking that we place it on an agenda, and it would come forward. I guess, I just really have, like many of us, have had to really figure out what are we being asked to do, and who's being asked to do it, and why, and I have given this a lot of thought, we've been talking about it, and we know the implications for our community, and when we talk about the loss of economic opportunity, we're not talking about millionaires, we're talking about people that are working second and third jobs in the hospitality industry, we're talking about people that go to work every day in a corporate office, that has signed some, a letter saying, you know, you must repeal, and people are coming and saying, well, you, how do you do business in this state when we have HB2? I have really tried to examine, how do we do this? And what I really would ask Mr. Smith, my friend down there, that to say, when we talk about this, there are three parties, there's the General Assembly, who passed HB2, there's the governor's office, who has filed lawsuit, against the third party that I would talk about, which is the Civil Rights Office and the Department of Justice. And when I look at those parties, all of them have a level of control over this issue that Charlotte does not. And when we start thinking about, what does this mean for us to take the first step, and I've said this, it's like asking us to take step 99, instead of, I mean, take step one instead of step 99. And so I still can't figure out if the, those three parties can understand how we are suffering economically, how our image is suffering, and not come to the table. So my ask is to say, if there's any conversation that could be had, that we can speak to individually or as a community, as a community, 8,220, 822,000 people living in this city, how do we come together and say to you, this is very important, and how do we come to you and say, the three parties need to sit down and figure this out? I don't know how that happens in this conversation around this dais, when the power is held by some other part of our governmental system.
Okay, Councilwoman Smith?
The concept that I put forth in a motion had been discussed ad nauseam amongst a lot of council members. It is not a shock, it is not a, it is not a new topic, it surrounds the principles that we have been working towards, again, affirmation that our city does not support discrimination, along with the code cleanup. The process by which council members are allowed to do that is we get six votes. So I mean, this is, to Mayor Pro Tem's, this is a process that fits well within our procedures, consulted the attorney, it fits within our procedures. Again, I just couldn't stand by anymore without trying to do something that I think will help get Charlotte back on track. And if, again, if we don't want, if you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it, I'll call the question, and then we can all go home.
Councilor Smith, do you have a proposed?
I would propose working with the city attorney to craft the language between now and Wednesday. Is that, would that be adequate time, Bob, for you to craft language that we could put on the agenda?
Is that it?
No, it's not it. This would be, this would come in the form of a resolution and an ordinance. If not, we vote it down, move on.
All right, Councilor Autry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Hagaman, last year, when our plan to issue municipal IDs to municipal workers was preempted by actions by the General Assembly, we asked you then, did we need to do anything to repeal the ordinance that we had on the books? And I And I believe I recall that your response was, no, we didn't need to do anything. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I'll, I'll be even more precise in a memo that I wrote to all of you on April first of this year, uh, where I did the analysis of House Bill Two and the effect of that legislation on the city ordinances and other city policies and practices, um, I did advise you that, in my opinion, by operation of law, uh, the General Assembly had preempted your authority to prohibit discrimination in public accommodations, um, and invalidated the public accommodations ordinance, and that action was not necessary. Now, I've given you my legal opinion that action is not necessary, that does not mean that you cannot choose to take action along the lines Mr. Smith is suggesting if you choose to do so.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so there's a motion. Are we ready to vote? Councilor Driggs, before we vote.
I just want to say, it underscores, again, there is actually nothing of substance at stake here. This is like a, a, a war situation. I'm trying to negotiate a peace. I am looking for peace. And peace, when you get two people who are engaged the way we are with Raleigh right now, and everybody's going, he started it, it's your fault, he started it, peace means that you get together and everybody is prepared to do what it takes to end this suffering. And right now, as I say, this is a battlefield, and all the casualties are from North Carolina. Even though it's a national issue and an international issue, it's gonna get worked out in the courts. The question of discrimination is gonna get resolved elsewhere at this point. I don't think there's anybody around here that advocates for discrimination, but the state of North Carolina has been made to look, because of the characterization of opponents of the bill, as if it was an entire environment, Jim Crow this. How dare they talk like that? We have run into a problem here that was a result of an action that Council took with good intentions on the part of most of us. It got a, an overreaction, perhaps, from the General Assembly, but I, I'm just saying, at some point, you've gotta look a little further down the road, and you've gotta say, how do we end the bleeding? And how do we not get into a contest we can't win with the General Assembly? There is nothing at stake here, there is no ordinance, this is just about us saying no to them. And congratulations, go ahead and say no, you'll see what happens.
Called a question.
All those in favor of putting this on our budget agenda on Wednesday, raise your hand.
It's all right, you can read, you can vote.
Four. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay.
I thank my colleagues for entertaining my motion and the robust discussion.
Okay, so will not be seen on our agenda...